I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, September the 18th, 2017. Want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have with us tonight Pastor David Mort of the Covenant United Methodist Church at 4366 King Springs Road, who's here to give our invocation, also lead us in the place of flag. So everyone, please rise.
Let us pray. Oh Lord God, Creator of heaven and earth, you're the God of all the earth, you're the God of this city. So we ask an outpouring of your blessing upon Smyrna, Georgia. Shower the gifts of your grace upon all who live and work here, healing divisions among us, and let us work together for a better life for all. Give your wisdom to these women and men of the city council and all in this room, and thank you for their service. But I pray that all we do as individuals and together as community will be to your glory and for the blessing of your people. In the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, we make our prayer. Amen. Join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those folks that are looking for a change or new in town, I'm sure the folks at Covenant United Methodist would love to have you. Agenda changes, we have none. Under the mayoral report, have a proclamation in recognition of Stephen R. Ewing of Wade Ford. I'm gonna let Derek Norton do that while Steve and his wife come down front. You talking about, what do they call this? Outcovering your pun-?
Yeah, yeah, whatever. Outcovered.
There you go. Derek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We don't do this very often, but every once in a while, we need to. Got somebody in our, in our city that really is outstanding, and Mr. Ewing in both business and his service, not only to the city of Smyrna, but to Cobb County and really Metro Atlanta, has just been, has just been outstanding, and we wanted to recognize you for all of your efforts, both business and service related. So I'm gonna read this proclamation for you. "A proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna in recognition of Stephen R. Ewing, Wade Ford. Whereas Stephen R. Ewing was born and raised in Montclair, New Jersey, and is a graduate of Delaware State University. Steve resides in Atlanta with his wife of 22 years, Terry, and his children, Hallie, age 20, and Stephen, age 17. And whereas Steve's career began at Apple Chevrolet in Fairlawn, New Jersey. In 1989, he opened his own dealership in New Jersey. Ford Motor Company purchased the franchise from him in 1992, and he became an interim operator with the company, responsible for managing franchises. In 1993, he left Ford to open a new dealership, Champion Fordland, with the support of Ford Motor Company's dealer development program. He was able to pay off the Ford stock in his dealership within four years, and he later opened Champion Nissan in Scranton, Pennsylvania, and Champion Lincoln Mercury in Hazelton, Pennsylvania. In 2002, he sold his dealerships and purchased Wade Ford, which he continues to operate in the city of Smyrna. And whereas Mr. Ewing's professional accomplishments are many, including past president and chairman of FMMDA, 1995 to 2006 top profit dealerships, President's Award six different years, Dealer Innovation Award with NADA, Partners in Quality Award, Top 25 Dealers for Commercial Contract Volume, and 10th nationally in commercial truck sales in 2013, Top 10 in the region in certified pre-owned sales in 2014, and multiple national minority dealer top profit awards. Mr. Ewing was also the 2016 Top 100 Ford Dealer in the United States. And whereas, Mr. Ewing has a deep commitment to the city of Smyrna community, including Campbell High School Athletics Program and Smyrna Spartans Youth Sports. He also supports surrounding area programs, including South Cobb School Athletics Program, Cascade Community Services, KSU, Riverwood High School Foundation, Fulton County Board of Education, Clark Atlanta University, Sophia's Voice Foundation for Spina Bifida Research, Center for Family Resources, Atlanta Diaper Relief, Delta Sigma Theta's Minervous Foundation, Guns and Hoses Mayor's Cup, Atlanta's Young Generation Movement, and the Atlanta Mission. Now therefore, I, Aime Max Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, along with the Smyrna City Council, do hereby recognize Stephen Ewing for all he continues to do to enrich the city of Smyrna and the surrounding area through his entrepreneurship and community involvement. We thank him for his service. Thank you so much for all you do."
Thank you very much.
Just, Steve, I'm not sure the first time I met you, I just know the, the first time that I was told that the dealership was sold to somebody, a northerner.
Right.
And, but I'll say this, I mean, I don't care where he's from, look how big he is. He can be, I consider you a true friend, and Steve will tell you, I worry a lot, and a lot of what hair I have left is gray because I worry about that dealership and losing that dealership. What a great asset it is to the city, what a great contributor to our tax base also, but to our city, and if you, if you're gonna buy a car, go to Wade Ford. They'll give you an absolute great deal. But thank you for all that you've done. I know two, three years ago, three years ago, I guess, you reinvested in our community with about a $2 million rehab of the dealership, which really, I was so thankful for, and now you've expanded, you've taken over the old Moose Lodge property, which excites me. There's a lot of cars now there, which, I mean, what a great dealership, and I'm gonna shut up because I'm gonna go home early tonight, but thank you so much for what you've done for our community and giving back, and I see you've got your, your folks here, Cedric.
Acknowledge them if you allow me.
Just, I'm through.
I just want to acknowledge, and I appreciate, first of all, I wanna, this is grateful. Since I came to Smyrna in 2002, and, you know, I can't, I'm trying hard, Max, to become a southern boy, I'm learning a lot of things, but it's, it's coming, it's, I'm getting there. But I just want to acknowledge that this, this town and the relationship I've had with you and this city council, I'm grateful for what you do. As a businessman in this town, you know, you look for leadership. You look for people that are gonna make it a better place, a place where you can make an investment and feel comfortable. And for me, to come down here and make the investment, and my wife and I, we came here, I remember she, she told me, she says, "Steve, why are we moving to Georgia?" We were, we were up in the country in Pennsylvania, our kids were babies at the time, and I said, "For an opportunity." And I always will say that the employees I have here in Atlanta have, have careers. The employees I had in Pennsylvania had jobs, and there is a difference. And I have two people here with me today who helped make my team, I wish I could have the whole team here tonight, but Pat Walker, who is here to my left, is our office manager. Pat does so many things to, from HR to every, all kinds of things, as a bookkeeper, and when she joined our team, she changed the game. So Pat, I'm grateful for you to be here with me tonight at this event. And Cedric Ruff, who's behind me, who's basically started out washing cars, who's now worked his way through over many, how many years now, Cedric, Wade Ford? 32 years, and now he's Director of Finance at Wade Ford. And Cedric is recognized as one of the best there is in the marketplace. My partner, life mate here next to me, my wife, who knows I'm somewhat of a gambler, and I told her it was gonna be a ride when we got married, and it has been, and God has been extremely good to us, we've been blessed, and we try to share that, and we're raising two great kids, one at the University of Miami and one at the NYU in New York. She's gonna stay a northerner, I guess, right now. But for me, the one thing that I'm, I will, last thing I'll say is that, for us to be in Smyrna, I want to be, the city to be proud of what we've accomplished, because there are a lot of successful business people in this town that are doing amazing things. And maybe at some point, we'll have a, we'll have just another big cocktail reception where, and I'd love to host something, where we bring in business people and the city council people to just network and be around each other, because we have a lot of dynamic businesses. But I'm so proud that I can say, I can state that Wade Ford is the number one sales volume dealer in the state of Georgia, right here in Smyrna. Not number, number one. We have, we're recognized as a top 10 fleet dealer in the United States. So that land that we purchased, which is right there where the Moose Lodge is, and, you know, we're really in, heavy negotiating to build a facility there to be able to expand our operation into what we call a commercial quick lane, where trucks, cars, specifically commercial trucks, that people need overnight repairs to and maintenance that we can do there. We have a beautiful design that we presented to the city, and the city has, has moved on, and other than some DOT things, we're ready to permit. So I'm really excited about that, you know, the, so all those things are in the works, and I hope to have a shovel in the ground soon, but I just want to thank you for taking this time to recognize me. I think it's really a blessing for, for you to do that. You do not have to do that, and, and I'm just grateful, and I have no other words to say, so I look at all of you and say, "Thank you very much, we're grateful." And I hope that as we move on, and, and Max has been with me for the 15 years, the first day he walked in my office, he said, "Steve, the mayor's here," and I stood up, but before I had a chance, he took his shoes off and walked in to my office, and it's been a standing joke with us. But the facts are that leadership has been important, and I know you've done it with a great team, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Come on, Pat, we'll take the picture.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
That was awesome. Yes.
Where are you from in Pennsylvania?
Well, I'm actually from, my wife and I are from New Jersey, but my, my franchise was in Scranton.
Oh, okay.
You know the area?
Uh, yes, I was born in Pottstown.
Know that well, so, yeah, Pennsylvania's where-
I didn't think you were on the other side of the state.
No, we got, so you're a northerner too, see?
Exactly.
So tell Max, straighten him out, would you? Yeah, she's getting ready to go back.
Steve?
She's getting ready to go back.
Steve, before you leave.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank y'all so much. Thank you, Cedric. Everybody, please, please, please go buy Wade Ford tomorrow.
Yes, please.
Yes, urge people, but, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say, I'm a proud customer of Wade Ford, and I'm pleased with the team.
Proud.
I'll, I'll be back, I'll, I'll get a car next time, Steve, but the, I'll tell you, one of the proudest days in the city of Smyrna that I have had was the day when the CEO of Ford Motor Company came to Smyrna, Georgia, on your behalf, saying your praises about what type of individual and businessman you were that he learned of early on, and why he came to Smyrna was, he was proud of Steve Ewing and what he's done for the Ford Motor Company, and it made me proud to be in Smyrna. Thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank y'all. All right, I'm trying to pull up here, the second, item B on the mayoral report is, mayors can meet assignments, temporary assignments until Ward Three's seat is filled. As you know, Ms. Nudelwitz's seat to my left, Ward Three is vacant now, and tonight, also Ms. Wilkinson is not here. I've made some temporary committee assignments, committee assignments, just pretty much just filling in the chairmanship of those previously held committees that Ms. Nudelwitz had. It takes no action by the council. There is gonna be an election to fill Ms. Nudelwitz's seat on November the 7th. Qualifying opened up today. It'll also be tomorrow from 8:30 till, 8:30 to 4:30 Tuesday, and then Wednesday, 8:30 till 12 noon. So qualifying fee is $576, is that correct? $567. That's a little high on that. I'm gonna give anybody that's, that's running for that office, if they want to have the opportunity to come forward at this time, and just take, I don't want to go 10 or 15 minutes, much more than 30 seconds, to say who you are and, and where you live and what you're running for.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I think I know most of you, I've gotten to know some of you over the years, and known folks like the mayor my entire life. I'm Travis Lindley, and I qualified this morning as a candidate for Ward Three. I am a Smyrna native, second generation, arguably third generation. I grew up over off Lake Drive, in the heart of present-day Ward Three. Attended First Baptist Church kindergarten, King Springs, Griffin, and graduated from Campbell. 14 years ago, I started the first of three, co-founded the first of three businesses here in the, in the area, and have been very involved in the community since. I'm a member of the Cobb Chamber of Commerce, a life member of First Methodist here in Smyrna. I am the current president of the Concord Lake Village Homeowners Association, which is at the corner of Concord and Old Concord, across from the new fire, fire station. I am a, an appointee to the Smyrna Downtown Development Authority, which is, of course, offered a different and very unique window on what, what you all do. And I'm excited about the campaign. It's been, there's been a lot of chatter about this, this campaign and the state, state house seat, and Terry obviously leaving to go run for that. I look forward to visiting with the voters of Ward Three over the next six weeks. It'll be a quick election, but I am up on, online, it's simply Lindleyforsmyrna.com. And appreciate your time tonight, let y'all get on with the agenda. Thank you.
I see that Marshall Moon, who I just understood today, is also qualified, and he's on the citizen sign-up sheet, and Marshall, I give you an opportunity?
Well, I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. I want to say that my name is Marshall Moon, and I want to say that, that I'm glad and I'm thankful that I was qualified for this election, and I will say this, that if I am appointed to serve for Ward Three, that I will give it my all. I will give, I will give my heart to the people, and, and I, like I told the gentleman today, I said, "I'll be working for the people." And, and Mr. Mayor, and that's my, and that's, and that's what I want to do. I want to work for the people. My parents moved from Atlanta to Smyrna in 1964, and I got married in 1986, and I moved to Riverdale, and when my parents, like I was telling Ms. Graham, that my dad passed away in 95, my mother, she passed away in 01, and I took the house over, which that's on 1114 Pinehurst Drive here in Smyrna. And I want to say that I, that I love Smyrna, and I say that from the bottom of my heart. And again, I want to say that I will give, I will give it my all to serve Smyrna.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? I know that, actually, three folks qualified this morning, so, or today, so, don't know if the third candidate is here. Obviously, he's not. Okay. Then we will move on into the regular portion of our agenda. Item Four is land issues, zonings, and annexations. Item A, 2017-345, is a public hearing authorization request, 2017-345, for apartment name change at 3385 Atlanta Road. Blue Atlantic Vinings LP doing business as the Atlantic Vinings. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Chip Short is the agent for Blue Atlantic Vinings, DBA The Atlantic Vinings, and he requests a name change for the apartment located at 3385 Atlanta Road Southeast. The previous name, Rock Creek at Vinings. The name change application has been reviewed and approved by the Fire Marshal, Building Inspector, City Engineer, and 911 Communications, as well as reported to the Business License Officer. Therefore, staff recommends approval.
Is anyone here from Blue Atlantic? Oh, y'all, you guys are here, okay. I don't know that y'all want to mess this up, because I'm just probably gonna skate on through there, see. But if you'd like to say anything, I understand that it's just a name change, a new ownership, you can come on up and say.
So it's just, just a name change?
Just, just tell us who you are.
A Chip Short. I'm the asset manager, investment manager for the property.
Okay.
And property's undergoing about a $4 million renovation, so this better adjusts it to fit in our portfolio of other properties named The Atlantic at.
And I'm sorry, this, this is according to our agenda, this is a public hearing. I'm gonna ask you, is there anyone here that's in opposition to or would like to make any public comment concerning this? Because there is none. This is just simply a name change, and it's been approved by, I think, all parties, the department, I'll ask Mr. Norton to take care of that, and then y'all can, y'all can be dismissed, or y'all can stick around, whatever you want to do. Mr. Norton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'll make a motion to approve item 4A, 2017-345, authorization request 2017-345 for apartment name change, 3385 Atlanta Road, Blue Atlantic Vinings LP doing business as The Atlantic Vinings.
Second.
Motion is second to approve this name change. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Let's approve five to zero. That was good, you didn't mess it up, you can go. Thank y'all.
You can stand watch, good government, or you can have dinner.
Thank you for your investment in Smyrna also. Item Six, item Five is previous licenses, we have none. Item Six, formal business, A 2017-373, appointment of Mayor Pro Tem. I am the sponsor of that. According to our charter, the Mayor Pro Tem is chosen by the mayor and council. Terry Nudelwitz was, was voted Mayor Pro Tem at the beginning of this term, and I believe our charter says for the duration of the term, and she resigned her seat, and I'm gonna recommend that Derek Norton be appointed Mayor Pro Tem.
I move that the city council endorse the mayor's appointment.
Motion is second, and it's for the durat, and it'll be for the, for the duration of this term. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Let's approve five to zero. Thank you very much. There's no additional pay, Mr. Norton, just so you'll know. And I don't think he even have an office anymore. Terry, you gave that up. Item B, 2017-369, approval of Ward One appointment, Tom Bartlett to the Planning and Zoning Board to fulfill the term expired 2017. I won't ask for any background, I'll just turn that over to Mr. Derek Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a spot come up for Ward One on the Planning and Zoning Board, Ron Roberts, who's served on it for a long time and has done a great job, sold his house and no longer lives there, so we had to fill his spot, and I'm pleased that Tom Bartlett, I guess he, he's here tonight. He has served as Chair of the Smyrna Tree Board for a while, and is gonna be a great replacement. He's got some big shoes to fill, Tom, but he'll do a great job. I'd like to make a motion to approve item 6B, 2017-369, approval of Ward One appointment, Tom Bartlett to the Planning and Zoning Board to fulfill the term to expire 2017.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion. Let's approve five to zero.
Start first thing in the morning, Tom.
Item C, CVY, 2017-01, authorize the city of Smyrna to abandon and dedicate certain right-of-way on Riverview Road and Nichols Drive to facilitate the construction and alignment of roadway at these specific locations as depicted on the attached exhibit and legal description. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
The Ardent Companies are requesting to abandon approximately .53, .530 acres of right-of-way along Riverview Road at Dickerson Drive and Nichols Drive to dedicate approximately 1.60 acres adjacent to these same locations in order to facilitate construction of the realignment of the road. Our public work staff have reviewed the dedication plat and legal descriptions and recommends the abandonment and dedication of certain right-of-way on Riverview Road and Nichols Drive.
Mr. Ron Finley.
Mr. Mayor, this is a continuation of the project that has been roughly five years now in the making. It looks very much like we're gonna see some construction before too much longer, but this one detail is just a finalization of realigning the roadway as was clearly defined, and I move approval.
Motion is second to approve this abandonment and dedication. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion. Approve five to zero. Item Seven, commercial building permits, we have none. Item Eight is consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
The consent agenda is as follows. Item A, approval of the September 5th, 2017, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the September 5th, 2017, pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the August 31st, 2017 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item D, award the Clifton Road Storm Sewer Rehabilitation Project to the lowest bidder, Ardito Construction Company for $82,532.49, and authorize the mayor to execute any associated documents. And item E, approval to use council chambers for Vinings Forest HOA meeting Tuesday, September 26, 2017, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
I hear motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion is second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Let's approve five to zero. Committee reports, we'll start tonight with Mr. Derek Norton.
No report this evening, Your Honor, thank you.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
I just want to remind everyone that I'm having a Ward Two meeting, November 4th, from 10 till noon at Bronner Hall, and I hope you, Ward Two residents can attend. Thank you.
Mr. Corky Welch.
No report.
Mr. Doug Stoner.
No report, Your Honor.
Mr. Ron Finley.
Just want to report that we had a finance committee meeting last week. The minutes have been reviewed as of this morning, and as soon as they are looked at by the other participating members, they should be available to the public, so you can see what we talked about. For those of you who missed the meeting, we'll have another finance committee meeting in the month of October. That, I yield.
Mr. Jeffrey.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jerry Graham.
Yes, I'd just like to go over the qualifying information. We will continue qualifying tomorrow from 8:30 to 4:30. They will go to lunch from 12 to 1:00, and then on Wednesday, from 8:30 to 12 noon, we will have qualifying also. And then that will conclude, and we will announce the qualifiers. Thank you.
Heather, anything? Tammy, I think you got somebody you want to introduce.
Yes, I'm very, very proud to introduce our new assistant city administrator. His name is Scott Andrews. Scott, wave your hand. Scott comes to us from the city of Sugar Hill, Georgia, and I am very glad to have him on board and participating on our city's management team, so welcome, Scott.
And his first day was the, was the hurricane, right? So you had all, you had many, many hours that first day.
Yes, he did. Yes, he did.
Next item on the agenda is show cause hearing, we do not have anything. 11 is citizens input. We've got three folks, actually, all three live in on Pinehurst Drive. Marshall Moon, unless you want to say anything else, 1114 Pinehurst Drive? Thank you. Timothy Riggleston is 1115 Pinehurst Drive, AT&amp;T and Schools.
Smyrnans, kids that have graduated from different universities with a degree that would fit into law enforcement, firefighting, all that stuff. And they seem to be going to other areas because of the pay. That's just what I wanted to, I was just a concern because I know that, what was it on our, the celebration that we had last month? We had, we had no areas directing, no one was directing traffic anywhere. And I think that's been the first time in what, 20 years, that nobody's directed traffic? So, just to, just a couple of concerns that, you know, for employees and that kind of stuff.
Yep. Al Graves, 1079 Pinehurst Drive.
For purposes of identity, I am Al Graves of 1079 Pinehurst Drive. And I don't know if this is a proper venue to discuss this problem or not, but I'm going to try it anyway. Recently, on my street, due to the parking and people walking in the street and so forth, I almost had a catastrophe. I almost run over my next door neighbor. There were several cars parked and I was proceeding at the speed limit and he couldn't see me and I couldn't see him. So inadvertently stepped out in front of me. And if I hadn't still had my 30-year reflexes, instead of 91-year-old reflexes, I would have killed him, to put it bluntly. So anyway, I got the, I got the thing out of the way and almost hit another car. And as many of you know, I have talked about this subject many, many times, about residential sidewalks on the older streets of Smyrna, which have been direly neglected. And every time before, for many years, we wound up with a contest between the council and the people presenting the problem about what to do about the problem. Somebody added the thought that people had to give an easement and the city didn't have the money and thus and so, and thus and so. So I know the problem is important to you folks because y'all have made it a quality of life item on new zoning here and that's automatically included as a stipulation on the new zoning that you produce. And I realize that is constructed by the contractor, not the city. But we haven't had any trouble constructing sidewalks on the main streets and the same problem exists to a more pronounced degree on the residential streets, I call them. Of course, some of the other main streets are residential. But anyway, I don't understand why they can't recognize that citizens are entitled to some consideration on this. Now, how it comes about, I don't know, but I'm down here prevailing on you people as, as a council, and I don't care who I meet with, where I meet with, or when, but somebody needs to accept this as a problem that's existed for the 60 years I've been here and nobody knows how to approach it. But you know how to approach it on the main streets, such as Concord and Macaulay and so forth. And I'm telling you, sooner or later, because of the number, traffic's increasing, as everybody knows, there's children involved, dogs, men and the whole bit, and this parking is getting, increasing to degrees you wouldn't believe on most of the streets. So if someone within this astute body could come up with some direction that we could take to sit down and either get a fundamental decision on this, you either are entitled to a sidewalk from your city body or you're not, or exactly how to proceed and what to go. And we always wind up with just a, a big rigamarole that is not satisfying to anybody. And I feel like that since this brought it about, it caught it to my attention. And so if anybody has any suggestions, I know y'all don't normally give a decision back, but I'll give you my phone number. If you'll call me privately, I'll be glad to converse with you and, and attend any kind of meeting that you want to have. And this is just not for Pinehurst Drive. There's multiple streets in this city that has, does not have a sidewalk, that has this problem existing to certain degrees. So I hope y'all will consider this as important as I do because it needs to be addressed and y'all are very remiss for having avoided it this far.
All right, thank you. I, I want to remind everyone that this Thursday, 21st of September, is the first day of North Georgia State Fair. And it's a great fair. It's right up here off of Ostell Road, Callaway Road. It'll be for 10 days. If you haven't ever been to the fair, you ought to go. We're very fortunate to have a fair in our community. I'm just going to address two, two quick things and then we're going to wrap this up at 7:36. Someone came up and tonight and mentioned, again, about our salaries of our police officers, public safety. Our, our police officers are paid very well. We don't have an issue with our officers leaving and going to other jurisdictions because of money. I think our benefits to our public safety is, is second to none. And also, I don't know anything, we had people wrecked in traffic. We've always had the fireworks event, which comes to a conclusion at 10:15 on the second Saturday of every year. We always have police out there patrolling. And I don't even know what that even has to do with anything, but aside having police officers out there. And, and after the last time that this came up, I did go to our HR folks and our police chief and fire chief and ask, we have folks that are leaving because of salary and they said absolutely not. And to the question about the sidewalks, the, the city normally does not go into subdivisions and neighborhoods to put in sidewalks and, but occasionally we do. Well, I will promise you this, there's two areas right now that we never could decide because there was so much controversy about what side of the street to put that sidewalk. Oftentimes, people that want sidewalks, they want it on the other side of the street. They don't want it on their side of the street. So if, if we get into that, and I think that both situations where we had, where we had an issue about the sidewalks, I think both council folks just said, look, it's just not worth it because they can't decide what side of the street the sidewalk's going to go. But, but, but again, we, we haven't gone into neighborhoods. New neighborhoods, they're required, we require often for them to have sidewalks, for the developer to put sidewalks in, so, okay.
Mayor, did I make one response today?
No, sir. I'll let you talk over two minutes.
In the democratic way you operate.
Mr. Graves, I let you go two minutes over your time allotted. And this is something that you could have come and talked to anybody up here about. You chose to bring it to public forum, which is fine.
I've never had anybody willing to talk to me.
You've never, have you ever asked me about sidewalks? The answer is no.
Yes, I've asked.
Not until you almost, you've never.
Yes.
Okay. Everybody, please go to the fair and have a good time. I declare this meeting adjourned at 7:38.